My daughter has rehearsals every night.
We're seeing a problem.
Not using.
I was just wondering if they were gonna...
They're a thirty-year-old bride.
But she just wants that I should have. I'm a eleven-year-old teenager, I should have that. What do you think? Has there been any, uh, quick, uh, organization?
Oh, yeah.
That was this one. I just, uh, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit.
She's a scientist, she's probably... You're shooting now.
They seem to be managing the fight.
So next year, she'll be her own.
I'll follow up.
My daughter was, uh, sleeping beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
And she's... A couple years later, she's now thirteen. I don't know.
You got a dog now, right?
Yeah.
My daughter's a little dramatic.
It's just him as the parent of the dog.
Really cool.
She doesn't do it.
I'm up here.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good. Same here.
It's deep in my...
Did you roll it?
Yes, I did.
Have we attention, please? My name is Mighty Atkins. I'm the chairman to my right and left. Vice chair, Mr. Cavais. His right. The clerk, Ms. Murphy. Behind me is Mr. Duka, the head of inspection services. Right around his chair. To my left, Mr. O'Brien, a board member. Mr. Ray Dell and Mr. Frank, all board members. If you have a cell phone or a pager, could you please put on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone wants to speak, please step outside. There's no microphone system here, so when you speak, please speak up loud. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If you think you might even testify, please take an oath. Please stand up and raise your right hand if you're gonna speak tonight at all.
I can't do it, boss, it's the law.
It's the law. If anyone's gonna speak tonight, please take an oath.
You swear to tell the truth, to hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you.
John. If we could, if we could, please, everyone, please stand. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence that Matt O'Connell, a board member, sixty years old, passed away a week or so ago, and if we could have a moment of silence for him, please. Thank you. I have a motion to waive minutes of, uh, on twenty-second, this twenty-second.
Make the motion to waive the ring of the minutes of last meeting on March twenty-second.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. I have a letter here, withdrawal for case number fifteen oh seven oh. I want to withdraw without prejudice. It's twenty-three to thirty-one Bridge Street for thirty-unit building for special permanent variance. I have a motion for this.
Justice Chairman, matter of fifteen, dash zero seven zero, Bruce Brook, LLC, Eric Charles, averting for special permanent variance in constructed residential building on the premises number four, three, thirty-one Bridge Street, Quincy. Make a motion to withdraw the case without prejudice.
Second, second. On the motion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. I have a letter here, withdrawal for case number fifteen oh seven oh. I want to withdraw without prejudice. It's twenty-three to thirty-one Bridge Street for thirty-unit building for special permanent variance. I have a motion for this.
Justice Chairman, matter of fifteen, dash zero seven zero, Bruce Brook, LLC, Eric Charles, averting for special permanent variance in constructed residential building on the premises number four, three, thirty-one Bridge Street, Quincy. Make a motion to withdraw the case without prejudice.
Second, second. On the motion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. On the new business, case number sixteen oh one five. Michael Solly for variance finding from all existing two-story residences, constructed two-and-a-half-story family residence on the premises number thirty Sunrise Road. The afternoon they're representing to be a counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Robert Fleming from Fleming and Fleming, attorney here in Quincy. I do represent the associate regarding his proposed, uh, single-family residence at thirty Sunrise Road here at Skorn. I know the board members have a copy of a set of plans. Uh, we didn't bring a larger set. A lot of the people have seen here this evening. We had a neighborhood meeting, and they've seen Michael's proposed plans, but I do have a smaller set. If anybody has any questions, we'll look at those as well. So, again, the, uh, Michael's here with me, uh, this evening, uh, if you have any questions for him specifically. Uh, so the property at thirty Sunrise Road in Skorn, um, is, so, a property is about fifty-eight eleven square feet in size. Uh, it's improved by a non-conforming, uh, two-story bungalow, single-family residence. Uh, it is located in a single-family residence, Residence A, St. John's District. Uh, Michael is proposing to demolish, uh, this existing, uh, single-family residence. Again, it's a, it's a bungalow-style, uh, changing family, you know, with, with Michael, uh, the house, that style becomes less and less conducive for his, for his needs. Uh, so his proposal is to, to raise that existing home, uh, and build a colonial-style three-bedroom, uh, home, uh, on the, on, on the lot. Um, you know, one, to make it more conducive. Michael has older parents that will be moving in with him, uh, as well, uh, into this new home. Uh, he, he, Michael's probably been one of the more conscientious, uh, clients of mine. Uh, he's been in this neighborhood, has owned this house, uh, for over eight years. Um, loves the neighborhood, uh, doesn't wanna move, certainly needs that more conducive home to, uh, to suit his needs. Uh, it's a really unique property. As a lot of the properties are down there, they front two streets, both Hawkins as well as Sunrise Road. Um, Michael is, uh, you know, not only improving the home itself, uh, but it's gonna be relocating it, more centering on the lot, uh, to meet or improve the setbacks for the front. Uh, we have two front setbacks, which he both has to meet somewhere. Today, it does not. Today, it doesn't meet side setbacks as well. Uh, so he is centering the, the home on the property. Um, with this fronting of, of, of these two streets, Michael is proposing, uh, something that was done in a home in the area that he thought was a, was a good idea, uh, is a drive-through drive under garage, which will drive through from Sunrise Road, uh, under the home, uh, be able to, uh, to accommodate two vehicles inside, uh, and be able to exit onto Hawkins as well, under the driveway there. Uh, I think that improves a lot of things, uh, both pulling vehicles off the street, which today, considering the size of this lot, it's only, you know, fifty-five square feet in width. Uh, I think it was, it's a, it's a good idea to be able to pull these vehicles off the street, be able to house them not only in the garage, but also, also the driveway. Um, by centering this property too. Michael's improving setbacks. Uh, there'll be less impervious area on the property, which will allow him to do a lot more landscaping on the property, really improve the drainage, uh, you know, from the property. Um, you know, with this, you know, we did have a neighborhood meeting, as I said, um, you know, with all those improvements, some of the neighbors did have some concerns. You know, some of them, uh, were surrounded this, this drive-through. I think it's kind of a new concept. Um, you know, it's unique to this property because it, it has the two, uh, fronts two streets. Uh, for me, for Michael, what we think it's, it's a good idea, it will help, it will, uh, you know, again, pull those vehicles off the street. These are narrow streets, both Hawkins, uh, and, uh, and Sunrise Road. Uh, so I think it helps in that respect. Um, Michael is requesting, uh, some areas of relief, uh, from this board this evening, uh, both variances as well as a finding. Uh, I requested a finding as well, you know, we certainly think, uh, you know, because it's a non-conforming residence, uh, what he's proposing here today is not gonna be substantially more than, uh, we think, we think quite the opposite. Uh, but again, Michael is here this evening. If you have questions specifically about him, uh, we are here to, to answer any, uh, at this time.
Counsel, third floor.
Yep.
We just, uh, you know, what is, what exactly is gonna be up there except for the pool here? Just a playroom or...
It's really just an open area, I think, just act, uh, kind of a, uh, if I, if I use the term man cave type of, you know, living room area.
That's why the shower's up there?
Uh, there'll be one, uh, one single bath, one full bath in, in that area, yeah. No bedrooms, uh, on the third floor.
Uh, and on the, and on the base, the drive-through, is that because you need a utility room or is it because that's the way you wanna design it? You get a utility room downstairs, should have a two-car garage deployed.
Yeah, so, again, to, to clarify that, it will be, you know, tandem parking.
I know, but we're talking about getting cars off the street. Getting cars off the street would be a two-car garage with a drive-through and a four-car now.
Yeah, certainly.
You get your family, the family living.
Yeah, certainly the...
Now you're gonna have two cars on there and car and inside the driveway, correct?
Yeah, I understand. This'll be a driveway that'll be, you know, sloped down.
Mm-hmm. Well, no, I see the neighbors, I see exactly, I know the property. I'm just trying to get in my head where we're going with this.
Yeah, just that, I think half that base will be for utility area, you know, and half will be this, this single garage group.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Mr. O'Brien?
Lot of them.
Ray Dell, Frank.
Can I have one, one question? All the bedrooms are on the second floor?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Yep.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor, first of all? Second call. Third call closed. Correspondents, can we be the correspondents, please? Madam Chair.
From the Department of Public Works. Specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Provide plan showing the existing proposed site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and the construction details. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Install survey monuments to delineate the public right-of-way. Monuments shall be set by professional land surveyor. Provide dimensions and grades for the paving area in all driveway entrances. Apply stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities in right ways need to be submitted along with a digital file. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by professional land surveyor or professional contractor.
Uh, is there anyone that wants to speak opposed? First of all?
Yes.
Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. There's a podium right here.
I need to go first.
Anyone else wanna speak? If you can line up right behind it, we don't have to wait for you to come up. If anyone else wants to speak, please step behind her. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Uh, Jane Hansen, for making this an honorable call. Um, I have one question before I start, maybe from the board. Do surveys have to visit with state properties? Because we have a number of surveyors that have done our neighborhood, and nobody necessarily stakes anything.
I mean, I don't know. Mr. Duka?
Yes?
She's saying, does every survey a state care property?
State property? Yeah, not necessarily.
Okay, so it's not required in the city?
It's not required.
Okay. Um, because on the drawings, the Phantom sidewalk on Sunrise Road looks a little bit narrow. But, okay, um, I think this is a very great house. I think Michael's been a good neighbor, um, but just don't think it's just the, the right block for this house. Um, it, it's beautiful, but it's big for the area, and it's, um, again, it's kind of out of scope with all the other houses on there. Um, I appreciate that Michael and his sister are going in on it together, and the parents may go in. I would not move to a three-floor house as I get over what there may be living areas on the first floor that may be moved to now. Um, it, it does basically max out the lot on length. It's, I'm two feet short, but going, not counting the stairs and any, like, thirty-six-inch platform you might have to put at the stairs, although this is an open porch, but I'm not in a thirty-six-inch platform. Um, but the height being thirty-five feet, I think is excessive for the neighborhood. One fifty-one never went to thirty-five feet, and, uh, one sixty-three Bayside, which was just built, is like thirty feet eleven inches, so if I were to stand for the neighbors, if I'm gonna stand on the roof line at one sixty-three Bayside, um, that's what thirty-five feet is. And if the third floor is, is not going to be a bedroom or anything, I would hope that it could be dropped down to maybe twenty-five feet. It isn't a water view issue with me. I don't have any water view, so it's not a water view, it's just that thirty-five feet of width sets a new, um, boundary for the neighborhood. Um, and it's on, so thirty-five feet is going to look more, the thirty-five feet wood look on a plane. Uh, the width, when we get to within six feet and four feet of the neighbor's property line, I don't believe, I believe that is more detrimental because of, in the lingo. Uh, it gets four point seven five feet, go ahead from third floor Sunrise downhill and six and quarter feet from one fifty-one. When one fifty, uh, from one fifty-five, I'm sorry. When one fifty-one was built, um, it was built with a ten-foot from, ten-foot from the pharmacy line, and the depth of that, but ten feet is, is really nothing. And so if we draw up the house at thirty Sunrise down to less than five feet and then six feet from the aquifers, it's too close for residential, I think it's too close for the neighborhood. It sets up like this row of houses coming down the hill, and that's too close for... Um, I'm not certain if you agree to the four, four point seven five feet and the six, twenty-five feet, um, for the deck and the bulkhead. Yeah, this is a zoning thing. Once you establish that, four point seven five feet, does that mean, if you accept it, does that mean Michael has that for the whole run?
I'm sorry, question.
Well, if he decides to expand it, then the same on the other side, the six point two five feet. Uh, when I was at the public meeting, I questioned where the facility's engineering equipment was originally used, and I think Mr. Fleming said that was too early to talk about that, but I think it shouldn't be talked about. We, I can't imagine that this is not going to be in care condition to us, because it would be absurd. Not a bill to put this kind of money into a house, and I agree. Um, I do have a question about parking, because I wasn't certain from the plans, what happens to the existing asphalt path? Is the plan is to break that up, the part of it that's on whole property?
Say that again.
The existing driveway, the existing asphalt path.
Oh.
Okay. Um, and I think just in general, you may not speak to the zoning issues, but garages collect stuff, and it's kinda doubtful. I don't know, I think they may, they may, they need his pins, uh, and fill drive-through, but, um, tends to be that garages collect stuff, and everybody in the neighborhood's parking outside now. I don't know. My question would be, if you kept, if you may, as the chairman described, the double driveway on Hawkins, he said the question of the hybrid in, in the way. And is that why we went for a single drive-through, the, the tandem, all the drive-through? Is there a hybrid? And those are, those are my concerns. Beautiful house, I just don't, I think it's large for the lot, and for the air, and, um, if you could set, keep to setbacks, it would be more comfortable for the air.
Mr. Hansen, you're above him.
I'm above it.
Okay.
I'm above it.
No, 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 that's why I was just trying to figure out where in relation.
No, I'm above it.
Thank you very much, Chief Counsel. Next.
My name is Elaine Manella. I live at thirty-three Sunrise Road, across from Michael, number thirty. Um, he's an exemplary neighbor in the Mission Park.
I can hardly hear.
Okay, I am, I am opposed to the driveway. I live across the street. Uh, as you know, it's a very narrow road, and, um, I'm especially concerned in the wintertime. We have a pickup, um, truck as a plow, so our road is only one car wide. So it's already as a hill, so it's already very difficult to get in and out of driveway. I also have a rear post in my driveway, so that, with the piles of snow and the conditions of the road, make it difficult as it is now. There are no driveways on the either side of Sunrise. They have addresses on Sunrise. They often put driveway on Hawkins side, and I assume that's because those houses when they were originally built felt that Sunrise Road could not accommodate driveways on both sides of the road, and I'm afraid that having that driveway opposite in ours is gonna make it even more difficult for us to get in that driveway. Now, we always...
You say you're on Sunrise, you're south, right?
Sunrise, I'm across from Michael, diagonally across, so his whole driveway is going to be between mine and our next door neighbors, the Johnsons', and so it would be the third driveway in a space of maybe sixty feet, two on the same side, one in the middle opposite, and I could get his way to plans. We can manage when people are parked on our...
So you don't want the car to come out on Sunrise?
I don't want the driveway on Sunrise at all.
That's a head.
Right, but his, his address, his parking now is on Hawkins. All those streets...
Oh, no, I understand, but his address is Sunrise.
That's right, right. But none of those streets that were originally built on Sunrise that face Sunrise, they all have the driveways on the Hawkins side, because Hawkins is so much wider and can accommodate cars going in and out. We had a very difficult time, especially in the winter, making that turn in and out of our driveway. That driveway, I'm afraid, makes, make it, you know, even worse. Um, so that's a, that's a big issue.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Um, I actually have some pictures of Sunrise.
Sure.
In Hawkins, it might help you, thank you, understand what we're trying to talk about. Uh, my name is Christine Norton, and I live at twenty-one Sunrise. I'm up the street diagonally from Michael. Um, I actually, you know, appreciate Michael as a neighbor, and I, you know, this is very uncomfortable for me to have to oppose somebody's dream, but I feel that the house, for that size of lot, is actually too large. The setbacks and the variances on each side to the neighbors is too close. If he's allowed, what's to say, the next house, and the next house, and the next house, everybody literally would be reaching out and shaking hands from window to window. I also oppose the driveway at one fifty-one Hawkins, um, eight years ago or so. The builder at that point in time wanted to put a driveway onto Sunrise Road. As you can see from those pictures, the road is very narrow, it can barely accommodate the current traffic that we have, and by another car pulling in or pulling out, I'm at the community meeting, um, Attorney Fleming was there, the builder wasn't there. There were questions I had that I really couldn't get answered. Um, so, just, you know, trying to review the plans tonight and try to understand a little bit more about the, um, building, I just feel that the current plan is too large for the lot of land. The driveway coming out onto Sunrise Road, um, would just cause more congestion, more traffic. The street literally cannot support any additional, um, cars. Everybody parks on the right-hand side, nobody parks on the left-hand side. There's seven or eight homes on the left-hand side, all their driveways are in Hawkins area, and for that reason, I oppose, um, the driveway and also the size of the structure.
Thanks. Hi.
My name is Patricia Grace. I live at thirty-seven Sunrise Road. Patricia Grace. And, um, I'm here to oppose the opposers, and I support Michael's venture personally.
You'll have your turn to speak when, or you don't now, go ahead, because we're inviting.
So I support your decision as zoning board to make the right decisions. Um, you know, he has the right to build the house if he wants to. We all have opinions on what we want and what we don't, but there are laws and rules of, you know, respects of what the house could be, and I think that we should take all of that into consideration.
Where do you live?
I live at thirty-seven Sunrise Road.
Okay, so you have some, so...
Hello. Pardon? Across the street. Across the street, like two.
Yes, it's south.
He's two houses up from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
I live on fifty-five Hawkins Ave, and I even a butter on his West Parkland. Uh, I oppose to this house. It's going to be overwhelming for my house. It's fifty feet long and it's gonna be thirty-five feet high, and all of my living space, my bedrooms, my living room, are all on that property line, which means I will not see sunshine again. Um, he also, um, has a colored, it's gonna have a colored porch, which just adds to all of that. Um, I also, uh, he also has a, um, bulkhead that comes out of that property. Uh, it's about five feet wide, four feet deep, um, and that'll, that'll be a foot closer to the line too. Um, and also I'm concerned it's going to have the heating and the AC pumps on that side of the property, because those are my bedrooms, and those make a considerable noise. And, um, uh, I need to say there are retaining walls for those, both those driveways on Sunrise and Hawkins, and, um, they're, in, in a heavy storm, they're like dams holding water, which means it would back up, and we've never had a problem with flooding, and I'm wondering, I'm concerned about that.
It should go down the ocean, shouldn't it?
It should downhill, but in this, in this area, because his house, it makes a valley between us, it backs up, uh, the, the retaining walls.
The driveway.
Yeah. Um, and, um, I think that's it. It's just overwhelming for my house.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hi, Chuck Eddie. Thirty-four. Uh, Chuck, thirty-four Sunrise Road, I'm Mike's neighbor, one door below.
Eddie?
Yeah.
Kenny, sorry.
Kenny.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to oppose the, uh, propose setbacks that are bringing this proposed property closer to my property line. Really my main concern. I think we're within ten feet already, and I think he proposes within four feet, and that's, it's almost five, yeah. And that's really my main concern.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Yep.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Yes, how you doing? I'm John Norton, I live at twenty-one Sunrise Road. I oppose the structure of this building, this, just the size of the, the structure of itself on the lot, the size of it, and the parking problems it's gonna cause. Every day during the wintertime, we have to call the city to come out and plow and sand our road, because it's a, it's, it's a dead end, a dead end in the hill, they have to back down the street. It's tough, but I think it's just gonna cause more trouble, more, more problems, the parking area, and it's just, you already had a building down the, down the end of our street that was built that already blocked the view of the sandbar and the ocean and everything, and it's just, you know, how big can you go, you know? The next president's gonna see that it's all right, they're gonna try to build bigger and bigger, and it's just, it's tough for any big one else. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hi, John Rodafell, sixty-two Gromwall Road. I'm here, I'm against this project because obviously a lot of the people in the neighborhood are against this project, and you have to listen to which people in the neighborhood want. There's zoning setbacks for a reason, and there's no hardship in this...
John, do you live in that neighborhood right down there by that house?
Do I live in that neighborhood?
Yeah.
I've...
I'm just asking.
I, um, spent a lot of time in Skorn.
I asked you a question.
No, I don't live in that neighborhood.
Thank you. That's all I ask.
Mighty Atkins, I do not.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm against bad zoning in this city, and this is bad zoning. This is bad policy, okay? How many square feet is the first floor, did it go from originally to now? How many feet away from the setbacks, is it, from the neighbor's house? I haven't heard any of those. I would like to know, is it thirteen feet is the law in Quincy that's supposed to be on the left and the right of the property? What is the setbacks and what is the square footage of the first floor? But I'm against this. I mean, this is so non-conforming with the neighborhood, and it's not about hiring the right person or the right attorney or being on the right page. This is bad for the city, and it's time to stop, okay? And I'm gonna keep coming up here, every week in speaking, because I have the right to do... because I have the right to do that.
Exactly, John. I've never heard you speak for any project in the city yet.
I just, you know, I find it, I just find it very offensive to the point because...
Not at all. You got everybody who's Quincy peasant to speak about any project.
I just, I just, I just want to encourage everyone in the city to stand up and fight for our city.
You should.
Thank you.
You should. Thank you, John. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Well, I was undecided. I'm Steve Johnson. I live at thirty Sunrise, directly across from Michael. I have no problems, quite honestly. We all know that the lots in Squanam are small. When the existing home is bought or sold and somebody buys it, it's torn down and a bigger structure is built. I know there's homes in Squanam that are bigger ones than what he's proposing. What the setbacks are, I'm not totally sure. You know, I personally don't have a problem with this driveway. He would have more of a problem with me. I'd park on the street during the summer and he'd have to get around my truck. But other than that, I just, I, I think it's been better than able at first.
Thank you, Mr. John. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Henry Bill Wright, I'm at one fifty-one Huggins. I'm undecided on the project. And I just felt like I should speak because my house has been referenced a few times already at the community meeting as well. Everybody, I think, in this neighborhood has spoken very highly of Michael. I'm happy for the project. I'm undecided and my views will be impacted. That's a testament to the type of neighbor Michael is. My feelings about his respect for the neighbors. I think the tough challenge that you have and we all have on the street is obviously it impacts us all differently. I think that's the only voice is that whether you're across the street, whether Janet is right next to him, whether you're somebody who built the house and previously lived on the street, or somebody like myself who's been fortunate enough to buy an existing home that was already built. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I respect the people that have been there a long time. So it's a challenging decision. But I personally didn't plan on being vocal because I just simply want the best for Michael and I realize a lot of things are karma and come around. And that's coming from my wife and I that will, you know, lose a significant portion of our beautiful views. But there's bigger and more important things in life, our friendship, our health, our kids. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Counselor? No, I'm just looking around. Anyone else?
Sorry.
Look, look.
Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, folks. My name's William Harris. I'm a new Westex counselor. One of my constituents who lives at one thirty-eight Huggins Ave had to leave abruptly. I apologize for my appearance. I didn't think I was going to speak tonight. And again, we have a beautiful community of Squanam. I love it there. And, but on her behalf, I need to submit as evidence a letter that she... And thank you to that. And thank you to the board and everybody that follows all my constituents.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Good boy. You're in favor of the plan, no way to oppose construction of the property. That truly helped with the pass box on the street, calling columns and talking. Last call. Opposed or undecided? Call up prior to hearing closed. Counselor, there's a few things in this project that has me shuttling back. The height of the building, where it's located in a small lot like that. Bringing the lot line four feet to six feet. In that neighborhood, if the house was smaller, down maybe, that would work. But the height of it, you're taking, you're taking parking in and out on both streets and the neighbors gain zero. There's two cars. If you have the two-car garage on one side and put your utilities where they belong and get the other room out of down there and you could park four cars downstairs and two in a lot of six, that's helping the neighborhood. This, to me, is not helping the neighborhood. It really isn't. It's a nice, beautiful home, but I don't think it belongs where it's going to go in the middle of that street. So I don't have any questions for you. It's just that it's too big for me and I'll be voting no. Any comments for the vice chair?
Yeah, I'm just concerned a little bit about the porches because I think you gained some space that was fortunate as well. The interesting idea about going through the house, I know that neighbors aren't very thrilled about that. I know that street is really difficult to turn around. I tried to stay off of your roses and tulips and everything. But it's a difficult place and that does concern me also. So I'm going to wait to see what my other guys say before I make my decision. It's up to the next president now.
Mr. O'Brien.
Counselor, I have a question here. I'm looking at these plans that you presented to us. And I'm seeing that you're requesting a variance for the left side for six point two five feet. It says it's thirteen non-conforming now. But the plan shows that it's more than six point two five feet. That's from the bulkhead side, right? And on the other side, it says that it's four point seven five, but the plan indicates it's ten feet.
Well, it has a reference to the setback of the wraparound porch. But then it has a setback in there for the home itself. Because the porch has a roof on it, you have to include that.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just need clarification.
So the four point side, the four point seven five is what you have to use.
From the foundation of the porch to the side.
Correct, yeah.
Not, not the building itself.
It'd be the porch. And you know, Michael's willing to look at that too when tapering that down. The setback. You know, with respect to the height, you know, it is, it'd be in conformance and compliance with the current zoning ordinance with the height and single-family residence aid zoning districts. It's not going to get higher than what would be permitted. I think it, it's a changing neighborhood. You know, I think parts of Quincy that are on the water, they're changing neighborhoods. They were a one-time cottage communities and now they're, these things are...
And also, Counselor, I think the neighbors could work with you. If you shrunk the house a little down, they wouldn't mind the porch aside. I mean, I think that's all workable with the neighborhood. But it should have probably been worked out before you got here.
Yeah, I don't know. And it wasn't brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Joe Finn was great in coordinating that effort until we could meet. And that's why we do these things too.
No, I know.
But the height, the height never really came up. A lot of focus was on the drive-through garage, which we thought would really improve conditions. You know, it'd be probably some attention to pull in to the garage from Sunrise and not pull out and then be able to drive right through to Huggins Ave. You know, and that was, I think, Michael's intentions. You know, someone to be backing out back on the Sunrise. It's more being able to drive through.
Like, you're not gaining a zero. You're gaining zero. You get two parking spaces underneath.
Inside, you have driveway as well. With today, all you have is two spaces.
Parking driveway, you just don't go in and out both ways.
Today, you have two spaces.
I have stack parking.
The existing home, you have two spaces. It is improving.
Could have been a nice two-car garage on there would have looked a lot better.
I'm not sure the space is there for that.
I don't think it is. You really need to make a four-car garage downstairs.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Raydell.
I mean, I've grown up in Squanam my entire life, so I obviously know the neighborhood. Lots are small. Lots are tight. Homes are getting bigger. Everybody's doing what Michael's proposing. You know, I struggle hearing the neighbors and I think it actually, do they know where the house sits now? Do they know that there's extra space off the street? Do the neighbors know that?
Yeah, it really hasn't been conveyed to them that the centering of this, of this house, you are, you know, increasing the setbacks of frontage anyway.
Yeah, and I was just more talking for the parking spots. You know, I mean, because you keep mentioning that the two spots underneath, yeah, we need to have two spots in the front.
Yeah, now you have stack, but you have stack parking. Now you have stack parking, the brand new home shouldn't have. Yeah, the new home shouldn't have stack parking. We should, we should be able to go in and out.
Yeah, so I'm looking down, concerned about too. I thought you had driveways on both sides.
Yeah.
And now you're on driveway one side and I'm going to have more.
There is, that's true. Yeah, well, there is. Well, that's false. Yeah, you're right. It's not bad.
And the idea came from another house that was just done. It just didn't have, didn't need so I can leave it in order. So that's where the idea came from and seeing...
It's a great idea. And four-pipe east underneath would be a lot better. It'd be a better home. It'd be easier to have people over, come in and out, and move it down if they want it. If you're building a house that nice, why not have a place where you can get in and out as you want? For me, I don't. Mr. Frankel, comments?
Yeah.
I don't really have a problem with the left side variance because as I see it, it's only the bulkhead that really is creating the four-foot six or the six and a quarter issue. So that's not really going to impact anybody's, that's not going to impact the view. The right side is close and with the porch gets closer. And I certainly understand the problems that the neighbors have with that. The height is the height. That's the zoning and our problem with that. And as Chairman Aiken said, if parking can be worked out underneath, I think Stamos did a drive-through before, which I found to be kind of unique and interesting. But Sunrise is a tough street. Maybe it doesn't work here. And it just may not because of the size of that street. But otherwise, I think my real problem is the distance on the right side of the porch being too close to the existing house. It's almost on the line as well.
Counselor, your call. You want to vote with your brother a couple weeks, a month, and then come back?
Yeah, if I could. It's either request to continue the, to, for Michael to be able to look at the plans and revise them.
So we made this, to make everybody kind of a little more happier and...
All right, so I would request that we continue the matter.
Right.
May tenth?
Four weeks.
May tenth, sure.
Have a motion, please.
Thank you.
Your call.
It's ten and number sixteen dash zero one five, Michael Solzey, for a variance finding for the voluntary existing two-story resident and constructing two and one-half story single-family residence on Crescent number thirty-seven Sunrise Road. Make a motion to continue hearing to make tenth.
Okay. Second, on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We take a five-minute break before we... Brother on tonight's agenda, case number sixteen oh one six. Does a rate change for finding to convert the existing single-family home into two-family homes to support unions? Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes.
Brother on tonight's agenda, case number sixteen oh one seven. May Feng Feng Fuzio Architects for variance to extend the additional living space in the basement of number three eighty-three Water Street. Is the applicant or the representative here? He's not here either?
That's your call. This is Water Street.
Did you recall?
Oh. You called Water Street, but you didn't answer. So I went on to...
We called Union.
Called Union Street, you didn't answer. So I went to Water Street. Which one do you want to do first?
Okay.
Let's go. Huh?
Union Street.
Union Street, you're up.
Good evening, my name is Mai Feng, at two oh four Adams Street. We're at the last zero two one two for the record. And this is the homeowner.
Add it.
I'm the owner of fifty forty Union Street, Princey Mass, zero two one six, seven.
You live there now?
Uh, no, I don't.
What's your address?
One forty-nine Sherman Street, Princey's, uh, two two one seven, seven.
Thank you.
May I ask for the board for the project next month? Because I really know that, you know, we have a lot of opposition from neighbors.
Okay.
We'd love to have a chance.
By ten? Have a motion, please. Vice chair.
Man, this is chairman, man of sixteen dash zero one six. Does a rate change where they're finding to convert the existing single-family home to two-family homes on Crescent number three forty-six Street? Just want to make a motion to extend hearing to make...
Second.
Second.
On the motion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So more. Thank you. Next on the agenda is three eighty-three Water. Who's that?
Four weeks.
Thank you.
Is this a change for what?
Uh, no, this is the older car.
Okay.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah.
So this is...
Thank you. Yeah, I got it. Just so you know, Mr. Frankel cannot sit in this case. He's got to recuse himself. Some sort of business he's got to do together so he can... So you have four people here. Not five. So you need all of us. You be in favor or it don't work. You're up, all, put it off.
Um, go for it.
Go for it. You got it. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Mai Feng, at two oh four Adams Street. We're at the last zero two one two two. This is the homeowner.
Yeah, my name's Dingpo.
Can you speak up? We got a microphone. No, 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 no. Speak up.
Oh, yeah. My name's Dingpo. I'm living in Manchester right now, in Martin Luther Avenue, Manchester. I'm a zero two one two two.
Thank you.
All right, this project have gone to the board. This is the first half. So the first half, we went to propose the two-family. And we were granted by the board. We came back and we put the front of the house. We wasn't so happy. And we provided to propose the bay window in front. At the second time, we went to the board and the board granted as well. So it's just going to be a homeowner occupied in the first floor. It's, and this time, we proposed the additional living space into the basement. No bedroom, just the playroom, an office, and a full bathroom storage.
There's no way to get in that downstairs except for coming from the upstairs?
That's correct. And also this, because there is the common area for the electrical and gas and there's the upstairs staircase on the right-hand side of the property.
Mr. Duke, I know you've been working with the client, the applicant.
Yeah. We fully support what's going on, Mr. Raydell. The new building plan, the ninth edition, the eighth edition requires an entrance or bulkhead of some kind to every basement. And it's also serves utility. We're not opposed to it. I think what happened, they built it as they learned as they built it. It really is limited space. So we support it.
Any questions to the applicant?
I have not.
So downstairs, you just got like an office and a family room just in it and...
Correct.
Any questions? Yeah. Mr. Raydell?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
No, he's not sitting.
Oh, you're not sitting. Sorry, brother.
I mean, he's sitting, but he's not sitting.
I mean, he's sitting, but he's not sitting.
He's sitting, but he ain't on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call closed? I want to hear from a DPW eight-four, two thousand and sixteen, we reviewed the above offered project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided?
Good evening, Steven Colapro, I live at three thirty-eight Granite Street, and I'm opposed to it.
Okay.
I don't even know how the building ever got built, but we talked earlier about the setbacks. It, the house sits on the sidewalk in the front. It's five feet on the left side as you're looking at the building to the property line. And today, when I was there, on the back, the set-back set of steps is probably three feet from the property line. Well, my house abuts the back of the property. If there's ever a fire, the house is at number, um, three eighty, at three forty, um, Granite Street. It's, it's a real old house, and it sits exactly right on the property, which is a big stone wall. If this house ever caught fire, it would catch that house on fire, which would catch my garage and catch my house. Because when the wind blows off of Water Street, you know the area, it hounds right up through, up towards Quarry Street. You know, she's... I got this notice, I never got the notice about the house being built, which I would have opposed it back then because of the setbacks. I, I'm not going to blame you guys, I don't know, maybe, maybe it was...
We can check and make sure you are on the list, you should have been on that list.
Well, I got this, this one about this, but I didn't get the original one.
Yeah, you should have got the original too. We can check on that.
But you let these people build this type of house. Before, there was a small little house there. I mean, granted, it was a piece of crap, but, and I know that the area changes and real estate is really up and up, but, uh, it's a monster house, and like I said, you let it build right on the sidewalk of Water Street. No setback. How come there's not a setback? Maybe five feet. No, I know, but the house doesn't have setbacks. And it had to be you people who, because I'm, I'm sure the planning board didn't allow it at the beginning, and so they had to appeal it to you people.
She's not the planning board.
Now you want people to live down the cellar.
No, she's going to be living down there, and it's not going to be bedrooms down there, and that's going to be...
Well, who said that it's not going to be bedrooms?
Well, we do.
I know what you say, I know what you say, but once you get the approval, who's to say that they're not going to make it in the bedrooms?
Because if they, they wouldn't come here and they'd probably just build it if they remember who's out of legal.
Well, I don't know about that.
And then that's how you get in trouble. But when the deed says no bedrooms in the basement, and the deed says no bedrooms in the basement.
But it happens all over the city.
Well, happy is the insurance company finds out, they look at the deed, someone don't get paid.
I, I, you know...
That's what happens.
Yeah, I know, but you just make it really hard for the other people, for the regular people who try to go by the rules.
That's what they do, go by the rules.
The setbacks, no, the setbacks should be the setbacks. You shouldn't just turn around and say they applied for variance and you give them the variance.
No, we don't, you know.
Well, I don't know if you don't, because all of a sudden, I saw this house being built, and I see them pouring the foundation, and I saw where it is. Now they built the front porch, and it's right on the sidewalk on Water Street. Not two feet, four feet, five feet, and why is that, Mr. Duke?
What does this all mean for business? The setbacks for business be? Business be zones?
I know, but it's...
I, I, I do. I think the original house was up to the street as well as all the other houses and buildings.
What, on the, on the...
Yes, but those are the old houses.
Wait, wait, let me ask the question. You asked the question, let me speak.
It's a business zone district, so all of those buildings are up to the front. So they have, that's what the baseline, the best part of that building, that's why it started there, to just rebuild it more or less on the same footprint up to the front. A lot of the buildings on that street are, have the same setback.
But the house they ripped down was setback twenty-five feet, twenty feet.
I'm not going to answer to...
Well, I'm just saying, as a, as a homeowner in the neighborhood, and when you see, all of a sudden, it becomes, the rules don't matter. Because you say it's a business area, and the houses that are around there are on the street, but they've been there for hundreds of years, so...
Two-family dwellings are allowed in the business.
I'm sorry?
Two-family dwellings are allowed in the business district.
I understand what you're saying there. I'm talking about the setbacks, I'm talking about not having, I'm talking, you let the building be built where the back of the building is butt it against another building.
Can you look at that file, please, and state his names in the first...
I don't have the original, I have the original case.
And me is, me is the abutter. I, I have, I have no say in what's a little, except to come here and vent. And I should, I got better things to be doing, the socks are playing, I'd like that to better than to be watching that, than worrying about a house catching on fire one, two, five years down the road if you're in my house now.
I'll just leave off with, with the rear setback where the rock is, that may not be the property line, it may go further back. The fact that they left the rock here is not indicative.
But the other house behind it, it, three forty Granite Street, it's right on that, right, on that wall. And from there, of course, you can go on and you can touch that house. So someone's dropping the ball, either that or the rules don't apply. And it's very frustrating when you see it. And what I'm talking, what's, what's title seventeen, it's chapter four point oh, is that because the project, the upstairs is just too small?
No, they're asking to, they're asking to use the basement for living space.
Oh, I understand that.
That's part of zoning, chapter seventeen, so that's what we're here for tonight. But they want to use the downstairs for living space. Yay or nay? That's what tonight's hearing's for. That's it. Nothing about the building, nothing about...
Yes, I, I understand it, but it kind of all goes together, because they had one motive in the apple when they came here at the beginning to apply for the house, and they didn't ask for that. What they asked is what they could get away with, and then they got approved for that. The house hasn't even finished yet, and now they're applying to live down the basement, or to use it for whatever down the basement.
Exactly. That's your right, as, as owning property in the city, what you do. When you decide you're starting to build something, you don't, you go, oh, I should have done this and that, you come back and ask for a change, and you ask for something else. It happens a lot in this place.
I, I understand it happens a lot. I understand. And if I saw the house sitting back five feet, ten feet from the lines, the property line, maybe, maybe it would be a little better taste in my mouth.
Probably would.
But, but, but the way the house sits now...
You want the house to be closer to your house, is that what you're saying? You want this house to be built closer to your house?
No, I would have liked the house to have been further away from my house.
Your house is on, wait, your house is on, on, so which one of these is your house? Which street is it again? No, these are lot, these are lot lines. This is the house that we're dealing with today.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a little house we drive, how they get there, huh? Is this one yours or this one?
It's got to be in there.
The point is...
No, 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 where did you live? Is that water, this, you want Water Street?
Yeah, this is my house.
Right there.
This is my house. This is my backyard right here.
Okay, I see. So you're a buddy from here, okay.
Yes.
So you...
This is the house that I'm talking about, it's right on the wall.
Yeah.
Only that's, that's, that's really not the right way that it is, because it's really over here. Well...
So what I'm asking you is, are you saying that you wanted this house to be built back this way?
No, I'd like, I would have liked the house not to be built...
That's why I understand that.
I would have liked the house to have been a single-family home that went by the setbacks. Just like it was.
That's your house, right?
Yes. This is my garage.
Right. Right. So what were they supposed to, go closer here or further? Where can they go further?
No, they should have built a smaller house. They should have...
Oh, 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 alright.
They should have went, had to go by the setbacks.
No, you kept saying it's on the lot line, it's on the lot line, that's...
Further than this, this is my, this is, this is...
Further away from you.
No, what I'm, what I'm in my back fence right here, I'm, this is all me. So if this house catches, this catches, and that catches.
Oh, yours catches, his catches, and that...
Right.
Gilt them...
Well, I thought that's why we have setbacks. That, that was the whole reason I thought we had setbacks. I didn't think we lived in Salty where everything was connected together.
But this is almost like Salty, this is a business section.
Yes.
It's been built many years ago.
It still is.
Well, as you, as you, as you go further, you'd like to think that, and I know now we have smoke detectors, we have spray to a system, and I know we have all that.
Right.
My problem is them coming back here, they got the house built, now they're asking you people to give the okay to live in the basement, or to do whatever they're going to do in the basement. And I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, second call? Third call? Call of party hearing closed? I want to hear a proposal. Patrick Corper, three eighty-four Water Street. Sixteen oh one seven, variance to extend living space, three eighty-three Water Street. To make concern, I object to wishing the variance on the town that this property was originally a single-family home and was granted a variance to construct the two-family home close to the property line as well as close to the street with limited setbacks. Now that the owners are really looking to make it a three-family, disguise it as additional living space. As the city knows, that parking is at premium, snow emergencies, and on-street parking is prohibited on Water Street. There is a home, there is a... Question, Patrick? Corper in the pocket.
Thank you.
Call of party hearing closed. And I know Mr. Duke has come working, and he's in a process. What's next? How many times do you come here and risk the basket and stuff, the window over there, now downstairs, look. I don't think it's a bad thing because it's going to be owner-occupied and it's your place, but you could move out of there two months ago. And then what? Now you gotta, the only thing I want to see in here is no bedrooms in the basement. No bedrooms in the basement, the deed is blocking it. So you can never be using bedrooms, whatever she got for a bedroom on the first floor is what she owns. That's the only way I vote in favor of this.
Yeah, we are here for a limited reason, which is to approve this case, we're not... I mean, I'll be, I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise in favor.
We have no way to control it.
I'm going to start putting in the deed.
Expecting, they have an inspection, you can...
Yeah, I mean, that's the...
And you can put in the deed.
I'd be in favor if we did that.
I know, it's tough down, we're still, we're still going to be put in. I think they can.
They can't say anything.
I'm going to say something.
He's out.
They're up.
He's asking for it.
He passed the answer, he's usually in.
You can get a whole speech from him.
Yeah. I'm still going to put in the, uh, you work, yeah, I'm still going to put it in there.
Marty says...
That's all.
And you can fight it, put it in the order, go to the deed, right?
Yeah, I hope so.
It'll get recorded.
Put on the option, pardon?
This, this decision will be recorded as well, and the plans will be labeled with a little bit of...
Have a motion, please, to draw.
Chairman, man of sixteen dash oh one three, May, uh, May Feng...
Oh, one seven.
Oh, one's, oh, one seven, what is it?
Oh, one three. Oh, one seven. That's a Catholic seven, see it?
It is a Catholic seven, I see that.
Sorry, make my eye.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, where am I now? Oh. Feng Russo thought checks for various extended living, additional living space, the basement of three eighty-three Water Street, please, I make a motion to grant the variance under the stipulation that there be no bedrooms on the basement level.
Secondly?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so more. Don't come back. Brother on tonight's agenda, Mr. Frankel is in, sixteen oh one eight. Terence Welch for variance to extend the northeast corner of the foundation to allow adequate interior landing on the Crescent number twenty to twenty-four street of Paris. Is the applicant or their representative here? Speak up, is one of you recording this?
Brian Kelly, I'm from Hull, Mass.
Address?
Ten Merrill Road in Hull, Mass.
Okay.
So I'm going to be the person who is building this house, so I'm representing Terence Welch.
Okay. What are you looking for us tonight?
Alright, so, uh, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure we put a package together for you guys to look at.
Yes.
So... Basically, it's, uh, it's going to help the design with the, the whole layout here. And basically, what we're looking for is just to bump out the, I guess there's a typo here, it says the northeast corner of the foundation, but it's really the southeast corner.
Yes, he, he told me that after I placed the ad, so I said just to mention it, because I couldn't read on the ad.
What's that?
It's the southeast corner, not the northeast corner, but I had already run the ad in the paper. So I couldn't change it.
Got a set of plans with, with where it is that you can change it?
Yeah, so...
These plans?
Foundation's been there for like over ten years, you know?
Yep, here it has.
So, you know all about it.
And that's all that's there right now, the foundation right now, wasn't...
Yeah.
The foundation's there already. And basically, this five-foot bump out on the southeast corner will help with the staircase coming from the second floor. Take a look at mine here, it's just looking at the foundation right here, right?
That's it, right?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. But as far as the design goes, yeah, this is a set of stairs. Well, it's all painted, it's really, it's already been through con, 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 con.
Conservation commission, con, con.
Yes, true, still.
Uh, yeah.
But he asked me, so we built it. So it's not, no, it's here just to get this addition on this foundation period.
That's what he said, that's what it was.
And let's find out what we're here for, because...
He, he did get permission, but this, they need to bump out now. Do you think he can ask for it?
Yeah, he is. I asked, it's a three-family home, it's a three-story home, he says yes, I said, you're... I heard him, he says, well, this has to do with the, I got to move that foundation. There's three floors. There's three floors in this whole building.
Dormers that conform to that third-floor ruling.
Well, that's basically, what we allow is a two-and-a-half story and we allow six-foot dormers. There's three of them on, and then what happens? You've got a fourth floor on the back, you look.
Yeah, so what happens is you take the average grade now, by the whole, by that average grade, it's considered two-and-a-half stories.
But I thought it was not the average median.
It's the average grade of the whole property. So basically, what is the average grade?
So you can get a permit to build this with one, two, three...
Well, these, these two stories, we allow them to be six...
Oh, just for the window?
That's what you see here.
Oh, they look bigger on this, I thought they were all, all, all... They're looking, they're seeing it all.
Well, you know what?
It's got bedrooms on the third floor and everything else.
See, that says six-foot eleven, so we allow up to six-foot dormers. Uh, because when you have living space and it's a half-story, you need windows, ventilation, light.
Right, and then what's on this side? Seven-foot eleven? This one here is seven-foot eleven.
Yeah, they, those, we limit them to six feet. It's a guideline.
No, I'm just saying, then he's got two big bedrooms on the third floor.
Well, that would be...
With, with seven-foot dorms, so that's all going to be changed.
Well, we consider that a half-story.
Right, but then the dorms?
They, all of six-foot dorms.
So these seven-elevens aren't going to work.
The seven-eleven will, it's going to be six. And that's a guideline that we use, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm. No, I was looking at, I'm just saying, it looks like three complete stories, you have two bedrooms on the third floor.
It is, yeah.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Duke.
It just, just for the boards, for the clarification, the six-foot dormers, by doing that, it also keeps the percentage of the floor space under fifty percent, so it's still considered half of the floor space, less than half, so it's considered two-and-a-half stories.
There's a possibility that it might, it just wanted better...
So he's got, the second floor, he's got, uh, two bedrooms, right? And then two bedrooms upstairs. You're here just to get a five-foot piece of extension, correct?
Yeah, it's going to help with the overall design of the staircase.
No, no question.
We're just approving that.
Just the proposal for the foundation, so this is Duke can deal with this, because this is wrong.
No question.
No question.
Mr. Chip, if I can move within...
Yeah.
Because he's here, so you do reserve the right, board, to change anything.
Oh, no, no.
It depends on the ground.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's why I asked him, do you have a permit for this? You're just asking for a piece of five-foot extension, the stair comes down, and he says, well, it depends, this is dependent on you. No, we're just, for the piece of bigger foundation, five feet.
Correct.
So that jaw goes, goes back in.
Correct. It's going to help with the stairs coming down, it's really kind of a...
Well, like he said, these plans can't be changed, he's not the plan, they don't work.
Yeah.
Too big.
They could, they could change.
Dormers.
Yeah.
Thank you. No questions, anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, speak in favor.
Actually, um, I just have a question, I'm, uh, my name is Kent Trum, I live in forty-eight Spring Street, I go across. I just can't imagine the northeast, that's why I'm here to see where, so as you said...
Southeast.
That's right, because I'm not just northeast, I just take a look and...
Sure. You might show them the plans and I'll come back.
The original design.
Anyone else wants to speak? I know. Is there anyone, second call?
Yeah, it's matching the houses on the...
Third call. And to speak, none of them.
Where's that?
Ah, good question.
That's my...
Yeah. It's an important question.
That makes sense, yeah. So just gonna imagine.
That's an important question.
I have a letter here in support, Wayne Batsen, twenty-eight Spring Street.
Yeah, there's a whole list of...
Dennis Doherty, three forty-six Rock Island Road. Francis Holliday, three fifty-two Rock Island Road. Laurie Peterson, uh, forty-nine Rockland Street, Robert...
Well, yeah.
Eighty-nine Spring Street. Janet Lois, twenty-two Spring Street.
And someone who's...
One forty-eight Rockland Street, to the other side. Diane, Leavitt, Leavitt, Leavitt. Lawrence O'Connor, one forty-eight Rockland Street. Deborah Conso, eighty-three Honsin Street. Todd Melchick, uh, one fifty-one Rockland. Put those in.
Thank you.
Yeah, one sec. You have a letter?
DPW, no comment.
Okay. Yes, yeah.
When did your client purchase that?
Twelve, six years ago.
Say, they say nine.
So when a property, that he wanted a bit, he kinda just turned onto it and now just